Capers, here. Director?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Scott?
Here.
Here. May we please join in silent prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag?
(Inaudible) ...to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay.
Madeline.
You came to prepare, I'm so glad. I was thinking you might want to do that over here. Hi, Madeline. It's Dan Moore. We're nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you too.
Thanks for being here today.
You're welcome.
I have a commendation to present to you. You can go around anywhere that you want to make, take pictures or do whatever you want, because I don't get to do this very often.
Yeah.
Okay, you ready?
Ready.
Whereas the Sioux City Housing Authority kicked off their Free Little Library in July of this year, taking up the challenge to increase reading proficiency and improve the overall academic achievement of children in low-income families. And whereas, Madeline Farnes, a nine-year-old Sioux City native, learned of the Free Little Library Perry Creek Elementary and Sister School Clark Early Childhood Center in an effort to collect books for the Free Little Library. Madeline wrote a letter to Hy-Vee asking them to sponsor cupcakes for the classes that donated the most books at each school. And whereas, Madeline's little book drive brought in approximately 3,000 Sioux City Housing Authority's Free Little Library. She hopes to pass on her love of books and reading to other kids in the community and says she likes volunteering because it, I really love this part, makes her heart feel warmer than hot chocolate.
I love that.
That's good.
That's good. Now therefore, I, Dan Moore, Mayor Pro Tem of the City of Sioux City, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council, deem it an honor to commend and congratulate Madeline Farnes for her outstanding efforts to promote reading and volunteerism in our community. In witness whereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Sioux City, Iowa to be affixed this sixth day of November 2017. Congratulations. Would you like to say a few words?
Yes.
Right into the mic.
Thank you, Council. I want to thank Hy-Vee for providing cupcakes to our winning classes, Mrs. Denny for all of her help with Antipore, my amazing fellow students at Perry Creek and Clark for participating, and Mrs. Thule and the staff of the Sioux City Housing Authority for being so helpful and welcoming. I started volunteering when I became competing, when I began competing in Iowa's National American Miss Competition. They asked all contestants to serve, to encourage a love for community service. There are many organizations that give kids these opportunities, but I encourage anyone with a big idea to make it happen, and I hope that all parents are as supportive as mine. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Very, very good. Thank you.
Madeline?
I'm Madeline.
Madeline, before you go.
Before you go, I want to tell you something. I want to thank you for all that you've done, and you're a role model here for the kids here in Sioux City and beyond. So you just keep up your good work and come back when you have more accomplished work, and we'd love to see you back again. So thank you for being who you are. You're a superstar for us.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Now, may we have everyone that helped with the efforts in Missouri River and the accident that occurred come forward, please. We'd like to have everyone that had been involved, all the agencies, please. We don't need anyone else, so please come forward. I want to start off, before I present this commendation to you, well, first of all, I'd like to have you just state your name, what agency you're with, please, for us.
My name is Ryan Denny, and I'm with the Sioux City Police Department.
Aaron Lott, Sioux Land Dive Rescue Team.
Mark Rogers, Sioux City Police Department.
Tom Trowell, Woodbury County Sheriff.
Tom Trowell, Woodbury County Sheriff.
Thank you, Wilson. I'm the Sheriff of Medellin.
Jeff Day, Meyer Towing.
Twenty-one hundred and thirty, Meyer County Sheriff's Office.
Rochelle, Midwest Gaming Services.
Michael Plann, Sioux Land Dive Rescue.
Sheriff of Davis, Sioux Fire Rescue.
Thank you. I'm going to take a little, read something that I came across in a publication that's authored by Benjamin Luft, and it tied in with the 9/11 responders, but this paragraph that's in his publication fits so well for what you all have done and how Sioux City rises to the occasion. So if you'd bear with me, I'd like to read from the responders about the many aspects of human behavior when called to serve in response to a disaster. We see them as the generous and altruistic heroes that they are, men and women who faced violence and horror for the sake of the greater good, men and women who risked their own lives for others, who do not see themselves as heroes but rather humbly tell stories of the bravery and courage of others. We learn that the substance of who we are as Americans, and I might add as Sioux Cityans, is not defined solely by our government and institutions. It is ultimately defined by the character and actions of our people. It is something to be proud of. Here's the commendation. Whereas, on October 16, 2017, a passenger vehicle was reported to have entered into the Missouri River. It was unknown at that time if there was anyone in the vehicle, and search crews were unable to immediately locate the vehicle. A recovery effort began immediately with the help of sonar. Officials were able to locate what appeared to be a vehicle in the Missouri River. And whereas, conditions in the Missouri River made the recovery extremely difficult and dangerous. It took several days to develop the resources needed and to form a plan that would have a high chance of success and safety for all involved. The search and recovery effort required help from multiple rescue agencies and local businesses, including the Sioux City Police Department, Sioux City Fire Rescue, Sioux Land Dive and Rescue, the Woodbury County Sheriff's Department, the Iowa DNR, Iowa State Troopers, Woodbury County Emergency Management, and Meyer Towing Service. And whereas, on October 21, 2017, a high-risk dive recovery was performed, and the vehicle was retrieved from the river. It was then confirmed that there were three individuals in the vehicle, later identified as Salomon Medina Zavala, Angelica Gonzalez Gonzalez, and Vanessa Medina Gonzalez. And whereas, the City of Sioux City salutes all of the individuals involved in this dangerous recovery, and thanks them for their service to the community and for helping the Medina Gonzalez family find closure after this terrible tragedy. Now therefore, I, Dan Moore, Mayor Pro Tem of the City of Sioux City, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby command all of the rescue agencies involved for their bravery and outstanding dedication to the people of Sioux City. In witness whereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Sioux City, Iowa, to be affixed this sixth day of November 2017. I also want to add, with the agencies that were listed, and Meyer Towing Service, that Meyer Towing Service donated all of their services to this rescue recovery effort. You are all to be applauded and thanked, and that's what makes Sioux City such a great city, is what you have all done. Thank you so much. Would you like to say a few words? Please do. We have time?
Time, yes, I'm sure. Come on, time.
Just looking around the room here, we had a number of agencies in here that we gave awards to. That was exactly what that particular incident was. It was the, all the agencies in the Siouxland area that came together to put this together, to make it a successful outcome, and without all those agencies and the cooperation, we certainly would have, would not have had the same successful outcome.
Thank you. Thank you. Our consent agenda consists of Items 2 through 11H, which constitute the Consent Agenda. Items passed unanimously unless a separate roll call vote is requested by a council member. Any person wishing to speak on an agenda item may come to the podium at the time the item is being discussed. Any person wishing to speak on the item not on the agenda may do so at the end of the regular meeting during Citizen Concerns. Please fill out a Citizen Concern card found outside the chamber's entrance and give it to the City Manager. Thank you so much. All speakers shall state their name and address for the record and then provide their statement. I'll entertain a motion to move the Consent Agenda Items 2 through 11H. Moved.
Second.
Thank you. Number 2, Reading of the City Council Minutes of October 19, 23, and 25, 27. 3, Resolution Accepting a Donation from the Parks and Recreation Foundation for the Cone Park Development Project. 4, Actions Relating to Grants. A, Resolution Accepting the Grant Agreement Authorized by HUD Under the Funding Approval for the Community Development Block Grant Agreement. B, Resolution Accepting the Grant Agreement Authorized by HUD Under the Funding Approval for the Home Investment Partnerships Agreement. C, Resolution Accepting the Grant Agreement Authorized by HUD Under the Funding Approval for the Emergency Solutions Grant Program Agreement. 5, Actions Relating to Street Closures. A, Resolution Temporarily Closing Various Streets in the Downtown Area on November 20, 2017, for the Holiday Lighted Parade and Staging. B...
Excuse me. I want to say something about that parade.
Okay.
We, as a council, look forward to all our parades, and I know that Dan Moore is one of the big ones here, so we're all going to be there, correct?
We are.
Okay, that's all.
The real question is, will we be done with our council meeting by 5:30 so we can get there?
Well, we'll make sure of that. We'll escape.
The mayor's been practicing. He'll go quickly.
The mayor doing that, yeah. Thanks, Rhonda.
Sure.
Resolution, B, 5B Resolution Temporarily Closing Portions of Pier Street on November 16, 2017, for the Symphony Kids Show at the Orpheum Theater. 6, Actions Adopting Construction Documents. A, Resolution Rejecting the Bids Received for the South Gate Drive Manhole Replacement Project and Ordering the Return of All Bid Bonds. 6B, Resolution Adopting Specs for the Purchase and Final Design of the Renewable Fuels, Membrane, and Desulfurization Procurement Project. Item 7, Actions Relating to Agreements and Contracts. A, Resolution Approving Modification Number 2 to the 28E Agreement with the IDPD for the Deck Chev's Runway 13/31 Repair Project at the Sioux Gateway Airport. B, Resolution Approving Amendment Number 2 to the Consulting Services Agreement with HR Green for the Pier Street Reconstruction Project.
That's crazy.
C, Resolution Approving a License and Naming Agreement with Hard Rock Hotel for the Naming Rights of Twilight Tubing at Cone Park.
I want to say something on that.
And I have a conflict of interest on 7C, and I'll need to abstain.
I don't know if there's anybody here from Hard Rock, but sponsors that are doing that, and we really, really appreciate it. This is going to be a really great addition and helps us as far as the $50,000, I believe, that they're giving to us. So thanks to Hard Rock for jumping in and doing this for us.
And if there are any other businesses that would like to get involved, please contact Matt Salvatore. He would love to talk with you.
Yes, he would. And we would love that, wouldn't we, Matt?
Absolutely.
You betcha.
7E, Resolution Approving a Lease Agreement with BNSF Railway for Construction of a Temporary Gravel Road to Maintain a Sewer Line along Interstate 29 between Riverside Boulevard and the Perry Creek Lift Station. F, Resolution Approving a Contract to Executive Companies for the Channel Improvements, South St. Aubin Street to Lincoln Way Project. Yes.
We passed over D, Item D.
Did I miss D? Okay, go back to 7D, please. Resolution Approving a Service Provider Agreement with Blue Seed Entertainment for Tubing Hill Lighting and Audio Equipment for Cone Park Twilight Tubing. G, Resolution Approving a Pledge of Money and Naming Rights Agreement between Greg and Terry Grup, the City and the Parks and Recreation Foundation, for an Outdoor Gas Fire Pit at Cone Park.
I'm going to have to say something there, too. We're going to have to thank the Grup family for doing that, because without these people helping us out, we wouldn't have some of this stuff. So, and this is going to be another cool addition to Cone Park, so I'm telling you, this is going to be a big year for Cone Park. I'm real excited to see it happen, so thank you for the fire pit.
Matt, I had one question. You can probably just say, well, no, you better.
He has to come out and state his name and his title.
Exactly. No, my question, and I meant to text you, and I apologize that I didn't get to, but I was just going to ask, is there going to be an accessible trail or sidewalk from like the lodge to this, or is it adjacent to the lodge? I was trying to look at a schematic to, I want to be able to enjoy the fire pit. I want to make sure that I can and other people can and be able to roll up to that.
Yeah, Matt Salvatore, Parks and Recreation Director. Yeah, I have a sketch here if you're able to throw it up.
Yeah, I was just remembering, yeah.
Is it able to zoom in at all?
It will. You want to just, there you go. While zooming in, if you want to talk through.
So, yeah, there's absolutely a accessible path from the drive-up area all the way around the day lodge, around the ice skating rink, and here's the fire pit shown right here.
Okay.
So there's absolutely a accessible path all the way through to the fire pit.
Matt, will there be chairs and stuff sitting around there, or?
We're kind of working, we're working through that. We might, we're doing a bench campaign. We might put some benches there. We do have some chairs picked out. Won't be able to serve everybody that's going to be in the fire pit area, so we're kind of deciding whether or not we want to provide site furniture, maybe something that people are just standing over, gathering around, so.
I believe, we did talk about the bench project, and people could buy a bench for so much money.
Yeah, we're doing memorial benches, 2,500 bucks. That'll get you a bench with a custom engraved, engraving on the bench itself. They're 100% recycled materials made out of plastic. It's from an Iowa-based company, so we're kind of doing a bench campaign right now, 2,500 bucks a piece.
Where did you say those benches are elsewhere?
Where that, what's that?
The benches are somewhere else, the kind of benches that you're talking about. You told me there was some location.
They're out of Iowa Falls.
No, no, the bench itself.
Oh, on the plan? We'll put them around.
The bench itself, it's at another facility in another city.
Oh, yeah.
I can't remember what it is.
They had the same benches at the Scarecrow Farm in Lawton.
Oh, scare, yeah.
Yeah. Very high-quality bench.
They're really good benches.
Yep.
Yeah, that's all I, I just wanted to make sure, because we were talking about different accessibility things, I just wanted to make sure that I'd be able, there'd be a sidewalk or some type of trail.
Absolutely.
Dan Moore Law Firm probably would want to do a bench with all his people.
They've already contributed, but if they want to do more, then they're more likely.
They can do more, right?
Yeah, they can do more, Mr. Moore, there you go.
Commemorate the Rhonda Speakeasy, I think.
Oh, sure. Boy, oh, boy.
Is the mayor texting you?
Well, we'll have a little.
8, Actions Authorizing Deed From Matthew and Jessica Tank for Property to Be Used With the Wastewater Treatment Plant Asset Renewal Modification Project. B, Resolution Authorizing the Director of Finance to Make Payment to Matthew and Jessica Tank for Relocation Payments in Connection with the Wastewater Treatment Plant Asset Renewal Modification Project. C, Resolution Authorizing Final Payment to INA Construction for the 2017 Annual CBD ADA Sidewalk Ramp Phase 2 Project. D, Resolution Authorizing Final Payment to KNW Electric for the Gordon Drive and 158 Street Traffic Signal Project. E, Resolution Authorizing Final Payment to Steve Harris Construction for the South Cypress Street Extension Ravine Park Lane to Lincoln Way Project. F, Resolution Authorizing Final Payment to KP Construction for the 2017 Annual Curb and Gutter Project. G, Resolution Authorizing Final Payment to Knife River Midwest for the 2017 Annual Crack Sealing Project. H, Resolution Approving, Resolution Authorizing Final Payment to Bainbridge Construction for the Street Repairs 414 11th Street and 2219 Terrace Place Project. And I, Resolution Authorizing Final Payment to H&R Construction Company for the Interior Remodel Long Lines Recreation Center Auditorium Space Project. 9, Purchasing. A, Resolution Awarding a Purchase Order to Shields for the Purchase of Large Snow Tubes for the Cone Park Tubing Hill. B, Resolution Awarding a Purchase Order to Barco Municipal Products for the Purchase of Chain for Snow Tires for the Field Services Division. If someone would like to make a motion in that regard.
I would. I would like.
Pull the item, then?
Yes, for a separate.
City Attorney?
The motion can be made as part of the Consent Agenda.
Okay.
And then the motion will be voted on, and then as amended, it will be voted on as part of the complete Consent Agenda.
Mr. Director?
The motion would be to, I'm not sure the correct way to word this, to, because the RCA has written to award the purchase to Barco as the low bidder, the second low bidder was Thermoking, which was roughly approximately one-half of 1% difference, so I would make a motion to award this purchase order to Thermoking, making reference to the local bidder, purchase of 2% or less. The Sioux City vendor could be selected.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion?
I did have a question. How often do we replace these chains? I didn't know who could answer that. I didn't know if that was kind of an annual item, every three years. Do you know what the rotation is?
I don't know the rotation of the life. I think it was just X number that probably go through and break every year, so I'm sure there's.
It's Spirit of the Lulus Purchasing Manager. The last time there was a major purchase like that, I believe, was 2011. Since then, they've purchased bits and pieces throughout the years, but I think this year, everything just kind of came due where they need to do a mass purchase, so.
Okay, and that's what I'm curious about, is just if we're replacing them as they break, or if it came to the point where we're like, no, we need to replace the whole fleet's chains, or?
I'm under the impression that they're replacing them as they break. So just one of those things where.
We won't be taking the old ones off if they're still good and just getting rid of them.
But this is going to provide for new ones for everything?
Yeah, for all of our snow trucks.
Okay. Okay. Thanks.
I'll call the roll for the vote, please.
Director?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capers?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Number 10, Applications for Beer/Liquor Licenses. See the list and come forward if you have any questions. Number 11, Receipt of Minutes. See the list and come forward if you have any questions. This is the end of the Consent Agenda. Anyone have anything on those items? Okay?
Do you use your electronic voting panels?
Sure.
Yes, they will.
Let's try it. Let's just go for it.
The Consent Agenda passes 4-0, with Mayor Scott being absent. Party in authorizing a city deed, property at 4440 Curtis Street, petitioner Joseph A. Rucker. He wanted to be heard on that item. Is there a motion to approve? Moved.
Second.
Item 12 passes 4-0. Ordinances, Item 13, Ordinance Amending the Municipal Code Entitled Water Works Established in the 2018 Water Rates for South Sioux City and Dakota Dunes.
I'll move it.
Second.
I had a question about it, actually. We talked about this before, but I was just wondering, how often do we look at making these adjustments? Was the last time 2004, is that what I read?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council Brad Pitts, Water Plant Superintendent. Per the agreements, the rate is supposed to be recalculated each year.
Okay. Okay, and so this will set the stage, then we'll regularly be doing that from now on?
Correct.
Kind of a thought? And then is 15% the profit margin we used in the past? Has it just kind of been the standard?
That has not changed. That is, that is, that has always been.
Since the original?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I wanted to know going forward. Thanks, Brad.
You're welcome.
Okay. Thank you. Ready for the vote on the first reading?
I'll try the voting panels, please.
Hey, it worked.
I know.
Yours is?
Fingers crossed. Knock on some wood.
First reading passes 4-0. Is there a, any objection to waiving the statutory rule?
No.
Second and third readings, is there a motion for, well, we need to, we need to have a motion to waive. I'll move to waive the rules.
Second.
Moore?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capers?
Aye.
Thank you. Is there a motion for second and third reading?
Ready to do that?
No.
No, this is for the second and third.
I'll move it.
Second.
We've waived the statutory rules.
All that, okay.
Mr. Director, you moved it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Waters, seconded. Okay.
Do you use your voting panels?
The second and third reading passes 4-0. Item 14, Ordinance Amending Several Chapters of the Municipal Code to Reflect the Current Organization of the City. entertain a motion for the first reading?
Second.
They both seconded. I could move it, I guess.
Hey, there you go.
Why I said I'll entertain a motion?
Don't entertain it, just do it.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
I'll move it.
Thanks, Mr. Gretkin.
You're welcome, sir.
Should I second it? Or did you already do that?
There were two seconds. It was a tie.
Get a tie.
It was a split second.
Oh, jeez, this is fun. Okay.
Councilmember Capron seconded.
That's what.
Is that what you came up with?
Yes, we did.
Sorry.
Yeah, what is this?
We're fighting over it now.
Where's the mayor?
Not good.
I tell you.
We like each other. Okay.
Wait for one. We're ready for one vote.
I, I held it down.
There we go. Thank you.
It might have been me.
First reading of item 14 passes four zero. Any objections to waiving the statutory rule?
No.
No.
I'll move that we waive the statutory rule.
Second.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Gretkin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye. Motion for the second and third reading, please.
Moved.
Second.
Thank you. Whoops, did it work? Second, third readings pass four zero. Discussion items, item 15, resolution approving change order number one to the contract with InfraTrak for the riverfront sanitary sewer interceptor cleaning and televising project. Is there anyone to be heard on item 15?
Mark, I wanted to talk a little bit about it. But some of the problems being concerned, are we worried that it's going to get much, much larger? I know that the, this proposed amendment is 30% of what the original contract was and what we're looking to do. Can you just talk to what you're seeing and what your thoughts are?
Sure, be happy to. Uh, afternoon, Mayor and Council. Mark Sims, Utility Director. Uh, as you know, this is one of our large trunk sewers, and, uh, this is, I don't know, probably three or four miles long. Uh, hasn't been cleaned since it was installed in the 60s. And, uh, the contractor that we're using InfraTrak has done an exceptional job. I would certainly recommend them to others. Um, we do have Don Horner, uh, with HR Green here, if, if there are other questions she can answer. But, uh, essentially, um, this, because the sewer line has not been cleaned for that length of time, there's considerable amount of debris in the line, uh, and that requires a, a lot of what we call heavy cleaning, which means that the contractor has to go back through that same segment multiple times in order to get it clean. And he can't complete that segment and move on to the next, he can't move on to the next until he completes the, the previous one and, and it's, meets our standards. Uh, they do go back later and televise these lines to make sure that they're clean. Uh, when they do that and do some of the inspection, they, uh, look for damage to the, uh, the sewer line. And in this case, they have found some damage in some locations. Uh, Don can sure elaborate on that if you'd like, but, um, uh.
Well, the only thing I'd like you.
There's a lot of debris.
The only thing I'd like you to elaborate or maybe talk a little bit about was, did you say the liner's also coming off of it? The liner that was installed?
In some locations.
Is that going to have to be replaced, or?
I'm sorry?
How do you, how do you address that? Is that something that's going to have to be totally replaced, or?
Eventually, uh, I think in the short term, it's cut so that it's not, it's cut away so that it's not causing, uh, the flow to back.
Yeah.
Back up. Uh, and then we'll go back and assess that and determine whether a point repair could be made or something more extensive needs to be done in that location. Uh, we've had at least one manhole, actually, that the liner also, in the liner that was there to protect it, had collapsed. And it was starting to cause an obstruction in the flow. Uh, and again, this is a large trunk line carrying millions of gallons a day of, of sewage, so pretty significant, uh, findings. So this project has been very worthwhile. Um, and it definitely needs to continue. Um, we will probably reach a point this winter where they can't continue. And so we're projecting that they'll have to pull off sometime, uh, in the next few weeks, depending on the weather, and then come back in the spring to finish it up. Uh, and we're trusting that the additional 85 days that, uh, have been projected here between the contractor and the engineer will, uh, enable us to complete that project.
Okay.
I think it's something to the tune of 90 tons so far of material have been taken out of that, that sewer line.
And so, Mark, after we get this project done, we'll, I'm sure we have plenty of sewers that need to be cleaned.
We do.
Are we gonna, are you gonna come back and, and, uh?
It's, it's.
What's another plan that, that we should?
Yes, ma'am, it's part of, part of, uh, our annual CIP, uh, process, and we clean a certain, uh, segment of our trunk sewers, our larger sewers, every year. And these particular lines are much larger than our crews can clean, so we have to hire a contractor to be able to effectively do it. Uh.
And if I remember right, we talked about getting on a, on a rotation of some sort, right? So we're doing it more regularly rather than, what, 50 years or however?
Well, in, in this particular case, this line, there were other circumstances that caused this line to, the cleaning to be delayed for a period of a few years. Um, and those issues were resolved and we're able to move forward. So John certainly has been working hard on, on, uh, a program that will make sure we rotate these and, and, uh, clean, uh, one of those trunk lines every year.
Well, and, and as, as I understand it also, um, InfraTrak has been very good about letting, keeping up on things and letting, letting you know what's going on and, and, uh, uh, being, letting us know exactly what's happening and being very honest about it.
Right.
We have to, we really have to appreciate that because we want to get our money's worth, to say the least, but we also want it done right. So.
Yeah.
We have to appreciate that.
I've had no negative reports, and I think the engineers support that as well as John O'Brien, so.
Yeah.
Been very good. They, they also did our project, our, uh, Bridgeport sewer project a year or so ago. Did a fine job there.
Ready to vote?
Sure.
We don't have a motion. No, we do. I'm sorry, we don't have a motion or second on that one.
I'll move it.
Second.
Okay. Sorry, I thought we did.
I thought we did too.
Item 15 passes four zero. Um, and just for the record, I think I forgot to announce the vote on item 14, the, the motion and second to waive the statutory rule. That was a four zero vote. Item 16, resolution adopting plans and specs for the Tyson Event Center Lighting Retro Project. Staff request a motion to defer this item to November 20, 2017. I'll move that.
Second.
Do you use your voting panels to vote on that?
Oh, we can, we can, okay. Thank you.
When are we deferring it to?
November 20th.
Two weeks.
20th? Am I not coming through?
It's Ron, Doug Capron.
I'm tired.
The motion to defer this item to November 20, 2017 passes four zero. Item 17, motion authorizing staff to negotiate with Life Quest Services to formulate a contract for emergency medical ambulance transport billing.
I'll move it.
For a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Waters?
Mm-hmm.
Any discussion on this item?
I just had a few questions.
Okay.
Um, so I was just wondering a couple of things, and I apologize, I wasn't able to call before the meeting. Can we talk a little bit about what SPI currently uses? Is it a system similar, or?
Yes, Mark Asap Fire Marshal. They have an outside billing company. It is not this company. Uh, we did receive, uh, proposal from the current company that they are using, uh, but they were not chosen to proceed.
Okay. And was that based on collections, or can you speak a little bit to that? I don't know what, what you can necessarily say. I just want to make sure that it's, and we've all talked about a seamless transition, and I want to make sure that we're using a program, not necessarily that they're used to, but hopefully is as effective as possible.
From, from our standpoint, as far as, uh, in patient care, uh, this is not the side that, that they've been using. It's nothing that the, the paramedics or the people on the streets see. Um, basically, the data gets entered into a different, uh, reporting software, which then gets transferred to the billing company. All these, this company does is handle, um, basically submitting it to Medicare, Medicaid, private insurance, or.
Collection on the backend. Yeah, I understand.
So from, from the operational standpoint, the people on the street, they, they don't know what's over here, so.
Yeah, no, that makes sense.
I can kind of address some of that as well, uh, Jim Hayden. Um, I've, uh, in the, the company that we're currently using, PCC, uh, there's a lot of extra steps that we go through before we send it off to billing. But we were, what our goal was here is to minimize the, uh, the amount of workload on, uh, the administrative end here, not only the workload here, but in finance as well. So that was kind of our goal when we sat down to look at these.
Okay.
And, uh, you know, just judging from what I'm used to, they're, uh, working at SPI, uh, that's about 20 to 30 hours a week we spend on going through these calls before they get sent out to billing. And the, the more we can minimize those, the, the better off we are.
And Jimmy, you didn't state your title. Come on, that's your.
I don't have one yet. Just wait, wait until it's official.
Okay, gotcha.
Amber Hegarty, Assistant City Attorney. And the panel looked closely at all the proposals. Um, in addition, for, for council's benefit, Omaha, um, Fire and Rescue uses this Life Quest Services, and we did speak with them, and, and they, um, spoke highly of this company. Um, the 20 to 30 hours that Jim was referring to, they do not have an issue with that with this company. Um, as long as they have the, the minimum requirements, the company works directly with the hospital to fill in the necessary information, and we believe that will be a, a great time saver. And will also assist in our attempts to, um, have a successful billing, um, for our paramedic service. So, um, with your permission, we'll begin negotiations and bring back a contract for you, hopefully quickly, to execute with this company. Um, and for your benefit, they act, it's very rare that that happens for us in RFP process, but we wanted to let you know that, um, we think that this will be a, a good relationship for us going forward.
And, sorry. Um, one last thing that I was just wondering then, is it an annual cost, like a blanket rate, or is it like per collection or per request?
What we anticipate is that it, it will be a percentage of, of what they collect.
Collect.
For, per patient, is how it will work.
Okay, that makes sense.
So this company's doing the billing, but, and you've mentioned collections, but do you mean collections? You don't mean collections as far as unpaid?
No, we anticipate.
That's something separate outside of what this company does.
Exactly. They'll just be working with the accounts to bill directly to the insurance companies, Medicare, Medicaid, or the patient directly. They'll go through their process. If they're unable to collect successfully through their process, then the account, we anticipate, we haven't made the final decision yet, that will come, obviously, to council for final decision, will come back to the city to go out to a separate collection agency. Um, we believe at this time it would be better to keep those two separate, um, to avoid any conflict of interest. So while that is a service that this company offers, we're not recommending at this time that we, we go with this company for actual collections of past due bills.
Because billings, total billings, I think, were, that had, we had in the write-up was how much per year? The billings just generally, wasn't there?
I don't have that in front of me, though.
I mean, it was a big number. Do you remember seeing that?
I did.
This is SPI showed contractual allowances.
1.7 million, I think.
3.2 million.
3.2.
And bad debt of.
An estimated billing amount of 5.5.
Yep.
3.5 billion.
Million. And then net collections of 1.7. Yeah, exactly.
6,500 responses annually.
I think it's an important distinction, don't you, about the collection versus the billing?
Yes, it is. Collection versus billing.
Correct, sorry. Yeah. And I was probably saying collections incorrectly. I apologize.
Okay, any other questions?
Any answers mine?
Anyone from the public? Ready to vote?
Thank you.
We have a motion.
Thanks.
Thanks, Jim.
Yeah, thank you. Item 17 passes four zero. Citizen concerns. Are there any citizens that would like to address the council? Okay. Council concerns. Mr. Gretkin?
Uh, just a couple of little quick things. Uh, I attended the two construction update meetings last week. The Bridgeport Construction Meeting held, uh, at the Sulan Chamber of Commerce, and then along with the mayor and Alex, uh, and I attended the Morningside Construction Update. They had PowerPoint presentations. Uh, I sent a copy of that. I received a copy from, uh, Mr. Carney, and then I sent a copy on to Jessica. And I think you'll find a copy of the, uh, PowerPoints and some of the information at your desk. I just wanted to bring you up to date. I think both meetings went reasonably well. The more, are the, uh, Bridgeport Construction Process, um, there were a number, a, a small number of issues from the business owners down there regarding, uh, several traffic control issues, but, uh, the, uh, HR Green, and I think it was Craig conducting the meeting, along with, um, Brett, uh, I can't think of Brett's last name. Langley, Brett Langley, uh, at, uh, in Public Works. And, and they're going to work with, uh, HR Green will work with the city to determine, um, what they can do with the issues that are being requested. Uh, one was like they recommended, the business owners recommended a, a yield sign in a certain location. Another was stop signs in a certain location. But they're going to get together, try to resolve that. And the important issue is that all of the, they won't, they'll work as long as they can into the winter months, but then they will, uh, make sure that all of the existing streets down there will be reopened for the winter. So there won't be anything closed down for the winter. So that's good. In the Morningside Construction Up, there's a couple of issues, and there'll be some, uh, need for easements that hopefully will go along smoothly and, and, uh, in a timely manner so we can get the project started, uh, in the spring. And, uh, as well as a couple of driveways to a couple of businesses that, uh, currently don't comply with city code, that issue has to be, is the number of, uh, there was a fair number of, uh, residents there, uh, at the meeting. And I don't know the exact number, but they, the timeline was set up to start this project, I think, the third week in May.
After the parade.
After the parade. And the residents expressed a concern about having to wait April and May to get the project started. It looks like it'll be about a six-week project, or six-month project, rather. Uh, and they were hoping, apparently, we delayed it towards the end of May due to the Morningside Days Parade that occurs usually the first week, second week of May. And, uh, I would hope that maybe we would find some room to talk to, uh, the, the individuals who are responsible for footing, for putting the Morningside, uh, Days Parade, uh, together and, and hopefully finding another route, or maybe starting at Peters Park or something to start the project, you know, providing all the easements are in, and we get started on the timeline we're talking about, that we could get started. That would get them through a couple of months faster instead of having to wait. And I'd, I'd hate to see the parade. Apparently, it did, at the West End, that was an issue.
Dave Carney, Public Works Director. Yeah, when, when we did the 2016 construction on the West End of the project, it was supposed to start before the parade, and then we got asked and received some concerns, and we delayed the start of the project till after the Morningside Parade. So when we went to this phase, we felt that we would just set the timetable up to start after the Morningside Parade, since that was where we were directed the last time. So it's completely up to you guys if you want us to.
I'm not sure I want to go that route, because I think, we're, we're talking a couple of months here. It's a setback that, to me, doesn't make a lot of sense.
The option that I liked, uh, Dave, was when, I forget if we were talking or if, um, it was brought up in the general meeting, was the opportunity to do Clifton before, before the parade, so that Morningside Ave is still open. So you can do that, part of the, what, 40 working days was that?
Yeah, we could set that apart and have that, have a, an early start date, and then just hold off. If, even if they got it done, they'd have to hold off and wait till. We could do that. I mean, that, that would allow them to get some of that work done. And I think, uh, I think, um, Kyle at DGR had kind of mentioned that.
Someone did. I forget if we were talking or this.
I think he mentioned that. But I mean, that's, that, that work on Clifton is pretty short, because it's just doing some storm sewer improvements. And right along the curb line, there's not, that's not a, 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 a real lot of work.
So that's probably like 10 of the working days for that phase?
Yeah, probably 10 to 15 working days, if that.
Well, my thought, yeah, I don't know. It's just tough. I, I, if that's an act of goodwill, that it's like, well, we're starting the project before and getting that phase done before you work on Morningside Ave. Or, I, I mean, another suggestion. Or, I, I mean, another suggestion, obviously.
I think their push was is just to let it.
Start earlier and start the parade in different locations. Start the parade right there and go down and around or?
Yeah, I guess I'm not.
And it's not all about the parade either, it's about Morningside Days, right?
Well, Morningside Days would be less, you know, the first project was really going to affect Morningside Days because it's, I, my understanding is that's pretty much right there in the library parking lot. We're down from the Morningside parking lot now. But I guess I'd, I'd, I guess I'd want to talk to the people that put on Morningside Days. And it's completely up to you guys how you want to do it. We're open to either ways, just as easy for us.
Let's coordinate that effort.
Yeah, I, I think that would be good, if we could do that. I think that's a big concern for the majority of the neighbors out there and the business.
And, and I'll let you know, if we get to the point where, where there's a conflict and you guys are going to have to make a decision, we could just do that via, I can get your opinion via email or whatever.
And, and you know, if it's all workable.
It would have to be council direction at a council meeting.
Oh, would it, okay.
Well, if you can give us an update, you know what I mean? If you meet with people and there continue to be those concerns, because there were some concerns, but if you're not able to come to an agreement, yeah, if you could just update us, that would be.
I find it to be unworkable, but if it's, if it's sold down the whole project, two months is a big deal, so.
Sounds good.
Thanks, Dave.
Thanks, Dave.
Keep that smile on your face, Dave.
He had a smile on his face, Dave?
And the, the second issue real quick, because I, I'm just going to echo what Rhonda said earlier at the time. But I wanted to thank, personally thank the Hard Rock Hotel and Greg and Terry Grubb for their donations to the, to Cone Park. The, the make improvements amenities to the city that enhance quality of life are really important to the community and, and to all of the private individuals who contribute. Their support, maybe not only financially, but their, their time is, is really appreciated. I'm, I am certain by every member of council. And I wanted to make sure that they, just join Rhonda, that, that they know that we really appreciate all that they're doing to, to enhance quality of life. And Parks and Rec is doing a great job. And, and I think, I agree with Rhonda, I think this Cone Park's going to be a, a really great source of entertainment, family-oriented entertainment. So thanks again to Hard Rock and Greg and Terry Grubb. It's very nice of them. And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, yeah, I have a couple of things. Let's see, first of all, we got the, on Friday, we, it's Veterans Day and at eleven o'clock at the museum, we're having a ceremony for, the junior ROTC is going to be putting on a ceremony. They're from the Sioux City School District. And the ceremony will include a flag ceremony and a march, flag folding, which I think will be very interesting to a lot of us. Amazing Grace will be performed by a local law enforcement officer. And I'm not sure who that would be, but that's going to be awesome. And each high school band will play a piece of patriotic music to, to honor those who have or are currently serving. So it's, it's going to be a great ceremony Friday at eleven o'clock at the museum. Also, we have a welcome reception for Helen Rigdon. She's our new library director and it's going to be from five to six and that's on.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. And as now, and tomorrow's a big day because we have the election tomorrow and we have three of our, three of our guys up here that are running, which I think we all should make a wise choice. We all get along great, we make our decisions, we, they know common sense. And we are all wanting to make Sioux City go forward and I think we're doing that. And with the help of all the council working together, we all get along, we respect each other. And we may agree to disagree, but at the end of the day, we can walk out of here and we all still like each other. Is that right?
Absolutely.
Absolutely, yeah, see, there you go. So, you know, that's, that's what it's all about. So in this day and age, it's hard to find five people that, that can make the right decisions and use their common sense. And this is what we do up here. So we love our city and we want to see it move forward.
And can I ask one question real quick? Do you know, for some reason I had it in my mind, there was a Veterans Day ceremony at, in the Woodbury County Courthouse on Saturday morning as well, but I.
Oh, I didn't know that.
But I, I can't, I can't seem to find where I got that information from, so I don't know if it's.
And I called to confirm that, Pete, and I haven't received an answer back.
We'll find out.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
They have one every year.
Typically it'd be eleven, eleven, at eleven o'clock.
I thought there was one Friday, the ROTC, and then Saturday.
Okay, so I'm, I'm good.
Mr. Waters?
All right, well, Rhonda actually took most of mine, so that's good.
Whoa.
So, yeah, I would just encourage everyone to get out and vote. Tomorrow, there are thirteen polling locations across the city. You can vote anywhere regardless of where you live. You can go to one of the different voting centers. I would encourage you to check out the Woodbury County Courthouse website. I will list those different things, it's all over. The news has done a great job covering it and letting you know where you can go. I believe they're open from seven AM to eight PM. Is that right, Ian, right? And so thirteen different locations, please make sure to get out and vote. It really does, it matters a lot. And turnout's been pretty dismal lately, so we got to make sure that, that your voice is heard. This is definitely a way to do that. Then, let's see, did I have anything else?
Also, to add to that, you can vote at any precinct. So if you're, if you live on the west side, you can go over to Morningside. If you're over there doing something, you could go in any of those and vote, so.
Exactly. During the primary, I was downtown having, having dinner and just went up to Augustana Church, voted right there, it was nice and quick and, and really effective. So I'd encourage everyone to do that. This coming Wednesday at noon is the Sioux City Growth of Sioux City, so please attend that. Then, another thing I had was, and actually, can, who's in the audience? Reagan, maybe you know, or Marty, the startup games, is that this weekend? Or this week? Does anyone know, Marty, you know? Okay, I thought so. And what, can they look up on the website? I wanted to give it a plug, but I didn't have an opportunity to pull up the email.
Yes.
I feel so ill-prepared, Marty, I apologize.
Here, hand that down to Alan.
Oh, okay, there we go. Yep, you can sit there.
I think we're sending you, also, we're sending you an email here in the next day or so with.
Perfect.
With the attachment that shows all the events. Hope you can make it. And we also have a business for breakfast, hope you can make that.
Yeah, exactly, Launch Week, right, is what it's called?
Launch Week goes on for a week, there's all kinds of events. And get started, I think, this weekend. And then goes for the following week and then the, uh, business for breakfast at the end.
Perfect. Thank you. So, yeah, any local entrepreneurs, anyone, definitely look into Launch Week. It's an exciting time where you can definitely learn from other people and your peers, but also pitch your ideas and, and there are various programs for that. The last thing that I wanted to mention, and they didn't know I was going to do this. I see we have some Morningside College students in the audience. And I, I can surmise or guess why you're here. But if you could please come up to the microphone, I just want you to state your name, your major, and I think, is everyone here for social, US government? US Gov? Okay, can you come up and just state your name, major, maybe where you're from? Come on, don't be shy. Well, I'm going to call all of you out, so, come on, Jordan, everyone. Uh, this one, right in front.
That one, Greg, thank you.
My name is Jordan Yon, I'm a history major. What else? Oh, I'm from New Virginia, Iowa. It's like forty-five minutes south of Des Moines.
I'm Grant Zalperdang, I was born in Sioux City and I'm an accounting major.
My name is Jordan Epp, I'm a political science major with a minor in economics and I'm from Colorado Springs.
Tyler Sheefen, I'm from La Mar's, US Government and US History Major.
Cool.
My name is Celia McGaffey and I'm from Sioux City and I'm a political sciences Spanish major.
I am Svead Storm, I'm dual majoring in history and political science and I live here in Sioux City.
Thank you for being with us today.
Yeah, it was, I was excited to look out and see a lot of you in the audience. I know that as part of the curriculum at Morningside, you have to do a service learning component that gets you out into the community, whether it be political events such as this or volunteering at maybe the Gospel Mission or somewhere, various entities across the city. But I just wanted to at least recognize you and thank you for being with us today. It's, it's cool looking out and seeing my fellow Morningside College students, so. Thank you for being here. And with that, that's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Waters.
Hey, we all welcome you too.
Definitely.
Yeah, I wish that more, more college people would come and just see what's going on.
Marty, here we go, here's the workforce for future projects, talk to all of them.
Yeah.
Did you take their name down? I can get emails, okay?
We have several openings on our boards and commissions, so I will be reaching out to our citizens and seeing if there's any interest in some of those. And I would encourage the council members to do the same. Get the list of openings and make your calls because there are a lot of good people out there that volunteer their time and resources. And it's a, it's a great system that we have in our city. Mr. Padmore, do you have anything?
No.
Nicole?
I do not, thank you.
Okay.
Lisa did though.
That we adjourned?
Second.
Waters?
Aye.
Paper?
Aye.
Grethken?
Aye.